And seeking the Code of City of Perth Amboy, and that's regarding deletions. Uh, resolutions. R forty-nine dash eleven twenty-five. Approving emergency contract awards and payments pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash six. R four forty dash eleven twenty-five. Directing the tax collector to place a lien on two eighty-five Bertrand Avenue, block seventy-four, lot twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five dollars fifty-seven cents for the charges incurred by the Department of Public Works to cut, trim, and clean the property. R four forty-one eleven twenty-five. Amending R four twenty-three ten twenty-five, authorizing refund of restoration fee in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Paul Martinez for property located at three fifteen Washington Street. R four forty-two eleven twenty-five. Authorizing a refund in the amount of a hundred dollars to Joe Fasano, a tenant for the return of his key closet for two keys with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R four forty-three eleven twenty-five. Authorizing a refund in the amount of a hundred dollars to Albert Dahl, a tenant, for the return of his key closet for two keys with the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina. R forty-four eleven twenty-five. Authorizing change order number one with Protective Paving LLC, decreasing the contract for the fire department parking lot improvements a rebid in the amount of four hundred dollars and eight cents. R four forty-five eleven twenty-five. Authorizing an agreement with Reverend and Bay Area YMCA to organize and operate housing services in connection with the Code Blue Warning Center Services. R four forty-six eleven twenty-five. Authorizing submission of an application to the Middlesex County Department of Community Services for the Code Blue Warning Center funding application. R four forty-seven eleven twenty-five. Accepting the twenty twenty-six grant agreement between the Middlesex County Department of Senior Services, Assistant Technology Grant for calendar year twenty twenty-six in the amount of ten thousand dollars. R four forty-eight eleven twenty-five. Accepting the twenty twenty-six grant agreement between the county of Middlesex and the city of Perth Amboy for assisted transportation services for calendar year twenty twenty-six in the amount of ten thousand dollars. R four forty-nine eleven twenty-five. Accepting the twenty twenty-six grant agreement between the county of Middlesex and the city of Perth Amboy for the residential maintenance services for calendar year twenty twenty-six in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. R four fifty eleven twenty-five. Accepting the twenty twenty-six grant agreement between the Middlesex County Office and Aging and Disabled Services for recreation, socialization, for calendar year twenty twenty-six in the amount of six thousand six hundred and ten dollars. R four fifty-one eleven twenty-five. Supporting the Immigrants Trust Act. R four fifty-two eleven twenty-five. Authorizing settlement of the workman's compensation litigation via an order approving settlement with dismissal in the matter entitled Stephen Murillo versus City of Perth Amboy CP number twenty twenty-four dash two six seven zero four for the amount of ten thousand dollars. R four fifty-three eleven twenty-five. Accepting the contribution of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation Inc. for the Rosen Garden Park improvements. R four fifty-four eleven twenty-five. Approving the issuance of a mural permit to enter into agreement with Graham Caraway for artwork at one seventy-four Smith Street. R four fifty-five eleven twenty-five. Authorizing through the Perth Amboy Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office ten thirty-three program to enable the Perth Amboy Police Department to request and acquire access Department of Defense equipment. R four fifty-six eleven twenty-five. Confirming acceptance and execution of an agreement between Middlesex County Office of Human Services and the City of Perth Amboy Police Department for the current year twenty twenty-six Station House Adjustment Entrepreneur Program entitled Perth Amboy Entrepreneurship Program to extend the amount of thirty thousand twenty-six dollars for the period of January first, twenty twenty-six to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. R four fifty-seven eleven twenty-five. Authorizing change order number three in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and forty cents, which will increase the contract to seven thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-four cents, an increase of three point seventeen percent. And change order number four in the amount of one hundred and three thousand dollars nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, which will increase the contract to seven million seven hundred ninety-five six hundred and twenty-three cents, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. An increase of four point, four point fifty-seven percent to the contract with Turco Golf Inc. for the Veteran Memorial Youth Lease Complex Improvements. R four fifty-eight eleven twenty-five. Authorizing change order number one to the contract with Vortex Services for the cleaning and CCCV inspection of the West Interceptor Southermaine in an amount not to exceed forty thousand two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. R four fifty-nine eleven twenty-five. Approving transfer of current year twenty twenty-five budget appropriations in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. R four sixty eleven twenty-five. Authorizing the person's person transfer of the plenary retail consumption license number one-two-one-six thirty-two zero-seven-one-zero-zero-six held in the name of Perth Amboy Wine and Liquor LLC at four thirty-nine Conbury Boulevard, three Fodir Mas Inc. effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Should we have some communications? Communications one, NJDEP submitted a copy of Gateway redevelopment LLC's approved land resource section document authorizing construction of four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty square foot warehouse, six-six floating docks, one hundred and twenty trailer and box parking spaces, two hundred and forty-three car spaces, a stormwater management system, landscaping, lighting, a public waterfront park, and a walking path. Two, Land and Engineering and Environmental Services LLC submitted additional information requested by the NDEP to support converting the application for opposing general permit twenty-three to a waterfront development individual in water purr for the former Wayne Marine site at twenty-six Washington Street. Three, NJDEP submitted a suspected hazardous substance discharge notification regarding the contamination of land resulting from removal of a one-two thousand gallon USD at seven forty-eight Conbury Boulevard. Four, NJDEP acknowledging receipt of remedial action permit, REE, transfer change of property ownership application submitted for E two zero one seven zero zero six Camtura Corporation, one thousand, Conbury Boulevard, and advising that RA E two one zero 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 one issued on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one remains in full course. Five, NJDEP advising that the land use application for the former Wayne Marine site, twenty-six Washington Street, has been withdrawn as requested. Number six, NJDEP submitted a suspected hazardous substance discharge notification regarding the contamination of land resulting from a two-car motor vehicle accident, which released fluids into the ground in front of nine eighty High Street. Number seven, persons submitted a copy of NJDEP cover certification form, classification, exception area, well restriction area, fact sheet form for the former Chevron Perth Amboy site at twelve hundred State Street. Eight, LSRP Consulting LLC submitted a copy of the NJDEP revised classification, exception, area of well restriction area CEA slash R, I mean WRA, fact sheet form for the ERET C NJ LLC, AKA Nextrom Inc. Site at six-eleven Sayre Avenue, block one-eighty-three, lots nineteen, twenty, and forty-seven. Number nine, LSRP Consulting LLC submitted a copy of the NJDEP updated receptor evaluation for the ERET C NJ LLC site at six-eleven Sayre Avenue, A D equals K A eleven six fifty-three Sayre Avenue. Return LSRP Consulting LLC submitted a copy of the NJDEP public notification and outreach for the ERET C NJ LLC, ZIKA, Nextrom Inc., Synchro Machine Company. We have closed session. R forty-eight eleven twenty-five. Authorizing closed session at the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss the following. One, workman's compensation litigation regarding Stephen Murillo versus City of Perth Amboy CP number twenty twenty-four dash two six seven zero four. Need a motion to vote? R forty-eight eleven twenty-five. Yes. Public Works. Three minutes maximum for a speaker. We have open, open, public?
The issue I'm having is tow trucks. Tow trucks were towed into half the fix my side of this. So I hired a contractor, he got the permits, so he built the sidewalk. So, the one issue that we have is this car right in front of the house that is broke, it's a tow truck brought in there and parked it in like five days ago, and the guy's living inside the car. And I asked him if he could move the car or whatever, he says, I pay plates, I have insurance, I'm not moving the car. So I said, okay, I didn't want to get into arguing with the guy. Contract, I talked to him, so I called the police department. They sent an officer, and the officer said, well, he has license plates, insurance. But then when I told him that, that car was brought in with a tow truck and they're packing in there, I said, that car is not operating, how's it getting fixed? He should have taken that car right to the auto shop and get it fixed. Now tomorrow, he's supposed to have the concrete tunnel and made it my side of this, you know? I don't want to have problems with my floor and everything, whatever's going on. He took the old concrete out of it. So my, my actual issue is, is what is the rules and the laws? Can you live inside your car, or is he right? And he does have insurance and very space in the car, but that does cause a hazard. One seventy-seven, Martin Street. Where's that one? What's the question? Madison Avenue, Martin Madison.
What side of your street am I in?
Right by that parking lot where the uh,
On the force for Mr. Madison?
Right, I live in that blue house right here.
With fire was? Excuse me? With fire was?
Yeah, I lived in that blue house for forty-eight years, and I got told the guy, he did, oh, he wants to say, his issue is, um, I pay insurance, bring the registration, have the license, I told him. But he couldn't really listen, I was ordering the city, I gotta get my side of this. So I'm complying with that. So they broke the old sidewalk, I told the guy, please move this or whatever, he says, I'm not moving it. I told, I told him, listen, you missed sleep in the car, we're collecting it, we had, I'm locking your door a couple times, uh, Sunday night, Monday next, with a cold. He got real grouchy, whatever, I mean, I left him on. And now the issue is the time needs to come back. To be late tomorrow, he just gave me a hard time, he was giving the officer a hard time, he just, you know, whistling. My question is, uh, what do I do? If this guy refuses to move his car? But the car is not operational, it hasn't worked. There's a tow truck in there Friday night, and back that car, it dropped it right there. So the car doesn't turn on or whatever. Tomorrow, he has a concrete truck coming, he's uh, made of cement.
I'm not sure what's happening.
We have to go, we've been paying the taxpayers for over forty-eight years. I, 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 it looks like they don't really care about the homeowners. They tell our homeowners, you gotta fix this, you gotta improve this. But somebody tells them, oh, their car is not operational, what happens now? I give them dogs.
Guys. All right, uh, please continue. We have the issue with the Washington Park. And, uh, the past weeks, you guys put a camera in there. And I called the police department about a domestic going on right next to the cameras. And I have our video, they were fighting. So, so the cop would think I'm a liar, I told dispatcher, settle to my house, so I could show him the video. And he was shocked too. I want to know what is going on with these cameras. They're still hanging out in the park, the cameras are on, you guys put a lot of money into this camera system, it's not working. We need the park closed. That will solve the problem, save your money, and close the gate. And I guarantee you, no more here on the mouth side of me. Okay? This is a serious issue. This is going on. The cops were there last, uh, last week when I called. You have the four risk drivers hanging out with the mufflers, grill out, they came there, park is closed. They got back in their cars, they took off. And you know the law, you can't have this, right? The cop didn't do nothing, didn't even stop one of them. In their face, tap, 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 the mufflers. What's going on? Seriously? Let's get this park closed. And we'll have, the taxpayers will save a lot of money for these cameras being installed, they're not being used. The cameras are supposed to watch and have video and voice as a bullhorn. They don't even have to go there, they just walk cars. They can talk to the bullhorn, am I correct? This is just what we have now, but it's not working. We have to get this closed, this park to close, and the issue will be over. Save the taxpayers' money, get that camera, that junk camera out of there, and close the park at ten o'clock. Like it used to be when I first moved to Perth Amboy. Thank you very much for your time. All right. It took me two and a half hours to get it squeezed, and I had a chance to hold change. All right, I'm gonna be here every week, and we gotta get started, we gotta get this off. Save your money, close the gate. Is the guy that closes the bathroom every night, he could close the gate? Very simple. Right, so walk in the back to the gate, close, that's it. And we gotta get the cars out of there. They use it as a profit, so.
Anybody else?
Your taxes went up, right?
No. Vincent McHill, one of, um, I live at the two fifteen Sheraton Street in Perth Amboy. Um, during, um, the last several months, I've canvassed in front of several four houses of worship to accumulate, uh, signatures for a petition, American right is to petition our government concerning the Immigrant Trust Act, which is on the agenda as a resolution tonight. I think it's, as a community which has overwhelming Hispanic community, uh, population, I think it's, it's inherent that you should approve this resolution tonight. The US government is, through the ICE law enforcement, is inferring that they have presidential bias towards certain communities in the United States. During, uh, this several months, the communities of Bloomfield, Edison, Jersey City, Newark, Patterson, Plainfield, Princeton, Trenton, Flemington, Madison, Morristown, and the counties of Essex, Hudson, and Union have all passed resolutions. Councilperson Batista Cruz has our petition. I think overwhelmingly, the people that we sampled were very aware of this issue. There is no question. There were some, and the majority, signed readily to thwart this Immigrant Trust Act, which should be, according to resolutions, sent to our assembly people, Greg Cawthon, Levon Locust. Last of all, I would like to say, to better drive this processor to understand as the US government and the local community accepting funding through Homeland Security and other fundings, I believe we should concentrate on what the needs of this community really are, providing services. Somebody of immigrant coming in deserves a due process to receive adequate services. And I think that's the primary reason why this petition was formulated. I have a, a sign here that says, immigrants need clean water. Support the Immigrant Trust Act. This community is faced with real issues in providing an upgrade in our water system, primarily that's developed in the Old Bridge community. I think that is part of the focus this council before with Tor, not trying to enforce illegal laws against immigrants. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Broderick. Um, I actually live in the neighboring town of South Amboy. I'm in restaurant management, I employ a number of residents of Perth Amboy that are all immigrants with varying statuses, and I'm also a member of multiple immigrant rights and human rights organizations in central New Jersey, and I'm a rep stronger, um, in dealing with this head-on. I'm here to ask for your support in the Immigrant Trust Act with a resolution to show your support, A, to the state, B, to the community that lives here. There has been an uptick in escalation of what is going on, and obviously every town and every county can't fix it. You wouldn't be the twenty-sixth town to pass one. It just shows the community that you stand with them. Um, employees of mine are scared to death of all different variations of legal status. And it is not okay that anybody lives with that lack of human dignity in my country, in my towns and in my community. I have a full-time job, I do not get paid for outside of my full-time job, running around to try to show dignity to other human beings and protect my local communities from the violations of the law that is happening. Cruelty and fear of being inflicted on, inflicted on other people is never okay, and I stand against that. And I encourage others to do the same. The eroding trust in law enforcement that is happening from this is gonna be irreparable. Cause no one knows who is who. The community is scared, you get a lot of calls for down here, and a lot of times it is not immigration, it is something else, they don't identify. There's a lot of fear going on. Um, my, some of my staff is, some rumors that Perth Amboy, the city of Perth Amboy is helping immigration. True or not, passing a resolution to the Immigrant Trust Act in your support of just will show the community that you stand with your residents of the community. That you stand in solidarity, that this is one town. Because at the end of days, it's no longer about your legal status, it's about if you look apart or not. Please pass the Immigrant Trust Act resolution, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Rupert, Lisbon Street, Perth Amboy, Jersey. I'm here to vouch on behalf and, uh, also demand that you pass this resolution, Immigrant Trust Act resolution tonight. Because, uh, the fact is, like, uh, previous speakers have mentioned, many other cities and towns throughout New Jersey have already passed this resolution. Considering the fact that Perth Amboy is eighty percent Latino, and as we know, we're probably the biggest target of ICE in the entire state, if not the entire country, we should have been the first city to pass this resolution already. There's no reason we should be one of the last ones. So, and, and actually passing this resolution would be playing, could be playing catch-up with the rest of the state to actually force the state government to pass the Immigrant Trust Act. So immigrants and plain residents in this city could actually use emergency services, along with other social services, without worrying about potentially being detained and being sent to a concentration camp, whether it's the United States, or currently in a slot door, or even Uganda. That is unacceptable. We need to do all we can, and this is the start. And again, well, by passing this resolution, we'll be playing catch-up. So again, I request that you all do the right thing tonight, and actually pass the resolution so that residents of Perth Amboy can be safe from these human rights violations that are happening throughout the entire country. People are being detained just for being in this country, and for the most part, we're not even committing any crimes. Most of the people being detained right now have no criminal background whatsoever, that is the reality. Our community is being targeted. So let's do the right thing tonight, and actually defend our community, defend our residents. Cause this is Perth Amboy, eighty percent Latino, we should have done this a long time ago. We shouldn't be the last, the last city in the entire states to actually pass this resolution. So again, let's do the right thing, and show an example for the entire state so the states, the state assembly, and the state governor could actually take, make this into law so that immigrants, our residents, not being sent to concentration camps for literally nothing. For what, a, a, a simple violation, not even a crime. Again, do the right thing, please.
Good evening, council, acting council president, good to see you. And members of the council, Ken Guns Office, one-ten High Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. Um, I arrived a little bit late this evening. Are the other two council members gonna be coming for the seven o'clock meeting, or are they out today? You have on your agenda today, um, you're voting on basically authorizing bond debt a little over fifteen million dollars, which obviously is substantial. Um, and I understand that it's normal for municipalities to incur such debt for capital improvement projects, so I'm not necessarily questioning the validity specifically of that bond debt, but I do suggest you may want to consider, uh, tabling those motions until the next meetings. That way, all five of you can vote on that, because they are substantial amounts that you're incurring. In all candor, I think it puts the three of you guys in an awkward situation that you're incurring so much debt, you have the city, and all five of you are not acting together. It almost looks as if the other two members, inappropriately, someone could think that that they were trying to dodge their responsibilities, voting the issue, and that would of course go away if this were just moved to the next meeting, so that's just my two cents on that. Separately, I would just curious, um, any, any update on whether or not Channel thirty-four is gonna be coming back on? No word? All right, and, and the council meetings and the other public meetings of the city are not in any way being broadcast on any station or anywhere at this point, is that right? There's still nothing shown. Thank you very much, have a good evening. Which, which council meeting is the most recent one that's been recorded, if you're asking, that's been broadcast, rather? Does anybody know, Vicki, any idea?
Broadcast on thirty-four.
Broadcast on, on the internet? Broadcast on the internet or the website? Is visible. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Oh, Chief Tejano. Make the motion to close the recording, please? Oh, not this one? Although the same.
Aye.
Okay. So that gentleman that was here, he, um...
Mr. Ruben?
Yep. He had the issues regarding the cameras that are in place over there, and from what I understand, he's spent a lot of money on those cameras and things like, there's still problems, issues going on, even though we have those cameras, he's spent a whole lot of money on those cameras. What is being done about the issues that are going on there and, you know, moving forward? Because there have been, I understand there was a fight recently, and nothing has happened. What is, what is the use of these cameras? What's that, what they're there for? From what I understand, they're very complex cameras. So what do we do?
I can tell, President, cameras aren't deterrent, they're never going to stop prime, and so is there. And when those are there, so they, they're, they're a concern, it's a deterrent. I understand the gentleman's main concern was getting the gates closed so that no one else could go in there, but that's a completely different topic. As he calls, we do respond. As far as the fight that you're speaking of, that I'm not sure. I did have to work with one of our operations captains to see exactly what was happening, what's going on there, so I had not heard anything from the captain. As far as a fight or any of those kinds of things, I'm not sure. But there are still regular calls. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure if the gentleman called, but there was a point where they called, and it was actually two police officers that were in parking, that were calling, that there was non-use and so forth. And even then, I was, so I'm saying, I'm saying there was this gentleman that called, but someone did call for them. So again, the officers are there, they're on emergency bases, on our check sheets and so forth, as well as these, the reporting issues on the Grand Avenue, they've been addressed. We have some radar details out there. We also have our radar boxes out there, and in the process of formulating a spreadsheet for you to show you exactly screens and so forth at times, which we're going to use for you to see what the people are actually doing and so forth.
Um, so I understand that it's, these cameras are used as a deterrent, but from what I remember, when we first were going to get these cameras, you said that, yes, it is a deterrent, but it also, it's sort of high-tech that when something does happen, it is immediately notified at the police station, and the police will come out and investigate what is going on and what it will respond best. So is this happening or is not, not gonna be going on according to the gentleman, nobody came?
They went.
No, they, they came. When I called them, they came in, and I told them the car, the description of the car, but it was my mistake. I, I looked at a small car, it's a sports car. So when they came, they pulled out right at the same time they were leaving. So I told the dispatcher, send the police over to my house. I'm gonna show you the video. The officer came to my house, he saw the video, they were fighting. I had their car, and they got back in the car, and he says, "You called it a sports car. That's an SUV." I say, "Sir, I don't know what kind of cars you are. They're small cars." That's what I thought about. So I thought it was a sports car, and that's what happened. But I showed him the video, and he saw they were fighting, I had their car, they were fighting, physically fighting. And it was by mistake, I said sports car. They were looking for a sports car. And right next to the camera, right next to the cameras, they were fighting.
In this way, you have that, what is done, like what is, what is the usual protocol?
Well, we obviously need to see the victim of the war because people fighting, it could be a play fighting, it could be a wrestling, you have a victim, that's what we have. We attempt to identify the vehicle, maybe by plate number, identify the individuals that are there, and make sure it was paid, find the address, that, and file it up that way. If those details were able to be gleaned from the information I just brought.
Second. Aye.
And we're gonna be back in session, and the council meeting will proceed after the process.
We'll be back. We'll talk, it's seven o'clock, I guess.
Second. Aye.
Most of the turn, the, the, the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the council meeting of November twelfth, in the council chambers. The sitting officer, Councilwoman Rose Morales, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the whole new Tribune, the Star Nudger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the YMCA Theater Room in the Public Safety Complex, three sixty-five New Brothers Avenue, at six fifty-one PM. The council meeting, oh, here, another council meeting. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Rose Morales, as the courtesy of the governing body, I would ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cellphones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, then please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call.
Councilwoman Walker?
President.
Councilwoman Lucio?
President.
I think Council President Morales.
Present. Oh, no, the invocation person. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this community and for the leaders we have. We ask you to grant wisdom and guidance to our mayor, myself, and the rest of our council members as we begin this meeting. Help us to have clear minds and open hearts as we deliberate and make decisions. Give us the strength to think what is right, just, and good for the people we serve. We pray for unity and the ability to work together, even in the face of disagreement, guide our discussions and actions, and help us to focus on the needs of our community. I see you. So, we start with the ordinance. Public hearing, three minutes maximum per speaker for ordinance. Ordinance number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designated restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three, eighty-eighty-five, an amendment adopted by, July twelfth, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A, in secret code of the city of Perth Amboy, and this is regarding additions. They have, uh, most of the two acres to public?
Second.
Okay, is there anybody, uh, who could read on this ordinance? See none, most of the clothes?
Second.
Um, ordinance to move? Want us to move?
Move it.
Want us to go down?
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lucio?
Yes.
Council President Morales?
Yes.
The addendum, public comments. Citizens may address the council on any matter on the addendum which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of three minutes, and most of the, uh, most of the public comments.
Second.
Roll call?
On the all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody, um, there's none, most of the clothes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Supplement to that statement, general improvements, four million nine hundred thousand. Water, water, wastewater improvements, eleven million two hundred thousand. Parking utility improvements, a hundred fifty thousand. Marina utility improvement, three hundred thousand dollars. Reports, one, Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency Annual Financial Report. Two, Build-A-Ball D CMO Controller submitted the following. A, Moody's Rating Report issued October tenth, twenty twenty-five. B, Check Register Report for the month of September twenty twenty-five in the total amount of nine million six hundred eight dollars seventy, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. C, Investment Report for the month of September twenty twenty-five. D, Revenue and Appropriations Status Reports as of September twenty twenty-five. Going current fund, water, wastewater utility, parking utility, Riverside Marina Utility. Three, Fallon Evar test collector submitted the report of collection for the month of October twenty twenty-five. Ordinance, first reading, build public discussion. One, bond ordinance provided for various improvements to the parking utility in and by the city of Perth Amboy, in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating a hundred fifty thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of a hundred fifty thousand dollar bonds, or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Morales?
Yes. Number two, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the city of Perth Amboy, in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating five million two hundred fifty thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of four million nine hundred dollars, bonds or notes of the city of Perth Amboy to finance part of the cost thereof in all similar.
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes. Councilwoman Lucio?
Yes.
Yes. Number three, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the Marina Utility Inn and by the city of Perth Amboy, in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating three hundred thousand thereof, authorizing the issuance of three hundred thousand dollar bonds, or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lucio?
Yes.
Council President Morales?
Yes.
Number four, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the wastewater utility Inn and by the city of Perth Amboy, in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating eleven million two hundred dollars, bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Looking for it?
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lucio?
Yes.
Council President Morales?
Yes.
Number five, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designated restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number three eighty-five, three eighty-eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A, in secret code of the city of Perth Amboy, regarding deletions.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution, uh, consent agenda will be, any, anyone? Okay, so consent agenda will be R four thirty-nine dash eleven twenty-five to R four sixty eleven twenty-five. Do you have a motion to?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lucio?
Yes.
Council President Morales?
Yes.
We have communications, and, uh, now we have closed session. Uh, public portion, three minutes maximum per speaker, and most of the ordinance.
Move.
Second.
Anyone want to speak, public portion on any matter?
It's Mac Hill, two fifteen Sheraton. I just think it's wise that you approve the Immigrant Trust Resolution, and hopefully Mayor Cava can sign it immediately. I believe there is rallies in Trenton and Hudders, uh, several minutes, well, there are coming up tomorrow. And I especially would like to, uh, address the issue that the Williams pipeline on, on the Raritan Bay has been, kind of, technically approved by the D E P. And there's a, actually, D E P hearing tomorrow, considering the compressor, uh, which is westward, uh, indeed of having that before they put any pipeline. So, five thirty tomorrow, there's a hearing, uh, in the D E P site, be accessed. The last, uh, thing I'd like to say is the, uh, understanding of, uh, one thing I mentioned about a year, uh, at the beginning of the year was the YMCA finalization of settlement. And I'd just like to say, is there any understanding or any ability of the city to expand the infrastructure in terms of building space, uh, for the community in general? I know that the YMCA member has improved some of the facilities, has put some new things, uh, in terms of the capital portion, but I'd like to ask, is there any ability, and I know there is an approval of an increase in, um, monthly rents for, uh, for the YMCA. So has the city done anything in terms of trying to improve any further space? Because I was at the YMCA, I mean, Olive Street yesterday or Monday, I mean, and basically, it's used a lot. Uh, there's a senior group there having games, having fun. That's great, but I'm understanding it's also used as a, as today for a code blue, uh, or yes, last night. So there's a lot of needs that the community of fifty-six or sixty-some thousand people need. So I think it's some investment in improving, Smith Street has made, we did the study several months ago on business and Smith Street. There is numerous properties that are vacant on Smith Street. I think some ability to improve further some of the city's infrastructure for the needs actually of the community, not these big businesses that are planning warehouses. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Again, once again, members of the council, uh, my name is Ruben, Elizabeth Street, New Jer, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. Yeah, I just want to come back here again and tell you once again that you definitely did the right thing tonight to, uh, and pass the resolution for Immigrant Trust Act, signal to, uh, state government, government that you should definitely make this Immigrant Trust Act into a law. Uh, and also, I just wanted to let you know that this was, uh, this Immigrant Trust Act resolution- this immigrant trust act resolution is actually on the table, on the agenda tonight because of three hundred, over three hundred residents in Port Amboy, New Jersey, who've had a petition, which I personally delivered to one of the city council members who's supporting here tonight. However, I just wanted to let you know, this is, uh, legitimate grassroots, uh, action from the people. This is what the residents of Port Amboy want, and also, as we know now, there's, uh, currently going to be actions in, uh, Trenton and Woodbridge. Woodbridge being, uh, assembly members' conference office tomorrow morning. It just shows that this is what people in New Jersey want. So definitely build up the people of New Jersey, and especially Port Amboy, want, and pass, uh, the immigrant trust act resolution tonight. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Let's see, there's none. Uh, motion to close, public portion?
Second. Aye.
And now we do two council comments.
Um, good evening. So I wanted to start off by saying that, um, everyone, I encourage everyone to go on the, uh, Port Amboy website. Uh, there are updates on there on Snap, and all those things. There are many, you know, important information that pops up all night, so I encourage everyone to go on there. Uh, I know a lot of people in the community are being affected by this, so we encourage everyone to go on the website. There are information on there on that. Uh, I also wanted to take a moment to express my full report on the immigration trust act. Being a proud Latina myself, I know the community that I serve. And I know there are, there are many people that are scared to speak up. I work with all the members of the community. Um, and you know, I have the privilege of serving this community, and it becomes, uh, a voice, and I just want to make sure that everyone is safe, and they feel valued and protected. So I appreciate you guys for coming, helping, and I just here, continuing to push through all the cities, um, in our county, because this is an important topic, and that everyone has the courage to speak up. So I wanted to say, thank you, and to express my gratitude for you taking the time on your day to be the voice for a little bit when I have one. With that, stay warm, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go. I, I, uh, wholeheartedly supported the, uh, the, uh, resolution. I mirror, uh, some of the old, because comments, I feel the same way. You know, uh, I'm only a second generation, you know. Everybody thinks of someone else. All my ancestors came from either Italy or India. So, but we all, all of us, although we're here standing today, it was, we're the people that are here now. You are advocating for, think for someone else. It's our job, open that house, and, and, so that we can, you know, prosper, because that's why I'm putting on.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just want to, um, thank you also, mirror, uh, council members here, um, for your strong support and I use support back as well. Um, thank you for, you know, being able to, uh, raise your hand, and I know there's, uh, thank you. Um, also just wanted to say, just a little, uh, for the, uh, veterans who serve, um, when they, certainly have had a partner, starting, and who, Councilman Lucio, is one of them. Um, so just, let's keep them in prayers and, uh, keep them, uh, safe, as they serve our country. Um, also, uh, just have also, uh, public service announcement. We are looking for, uh, participants for our holiday parade coming up, which is going to be Saturday, December sixth. So we are looking for particip, participants, and whether you want to march or have a float, uh, we are looking for showing as well. So if you know, if you're yourself, or if you're anyone who may be interested, please contact, uh, Samantha at the recreational apartment, um, you know, in the area looking forward to the holiday season coming up. Also, uh, this weekend is Puerto Rican Celebration Day. I did try to expand the lunch thing, uh, the flag raising at the City Hall Circle at one o'clock on Saturday, and following that, this celebration at the learning school, uh, at two P.M. as well. So, uh, hopefully, we're going to go to the, to the festivities, but you are all welcome, if you'd please join. And, um, other than that, hopefully everyone has a great evening, and, uh, thank you so much for coming. Now, we'll send this way to our meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.